Missing one participant. I've admitted twenty-seven and it shows I have twenty-eight. Whoever it is, I apologize. I'm looking for you. Maybe twenty-eight is me. Okay. Mr. Gooch, I think I've admitted everyone that's logged into the meeting.
Okay.
Before we get started, I just want to let everyone know I currently muted everyone. I will take that off whenever we get to the public forum. And I, but I know you have a statement to make about that, Mr. Gooch, so I'm not going to steal your thunder there. I just wanted everyone to be aware that they will be unmuted during that portion. And then for the rest of the meeting, the board members will be unmuted so that they can speak, but I'll keep everyone else muted. Okay?
Yeah, and I know you said not to steal my thunder, and I cannot remember where that verbiage was in my packet. I'm looking for it, but the first thing I guess we'll just call the meeting to order and do our invocation. Tammy, can, can you unmute Tammy and have her do the invocation?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Ms. Harvey.
Dear my Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord, and Lord, we come to you with heavy hearts and burdens, Lord, of the situation that we are in as our country right now, Lord, and we, we know that you are the great physician and the healer of all. And Lord, for not only our president and all of our officials, both local and nationwide, Lord, but we also ask that you be with all of our medical people, Lord, all the schools, Lord, throughout the, the nation, Lord, we're all in this together, Lord, we're, we're in the unknown. And Lord, I ask that you be with parents that are trying to teach and learn along with us, Lord, and just be patient with us and show us your will and your way. Forgive us when we fail you, Lord, and these things I ask and pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, before we start, I guess I'll read the same notice that I read last time regarding the suspension of certain open meeting acts requirements. On March sixteenth, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend and limit number of open meeting laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic and video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. In accordance with these, in accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least seventy-two hours or one hour in an emergency meeting or emergency supplemental item. This is an emergency meeting. I believe it was posted mid-afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. We are on meeting by use of Zoom software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any, at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will have five minutes to speak. And that's where Mr. Martinelli is speaking, that I have something else to read and I can't find it in my packet. If you would like to provide a comment in future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent possible. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. This software application allows for one hundred people to view and interact at a time. We apologize in advance for any unforeseen difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have any question about these suspended laws, please call Office of Attorney General at eight 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 six seven two six seven eight seven, or by email at toma@oag.texas.gov. That's T-O-M-A at oag.texas.gov. Okay, Mr. Martinelli, I cannot find, we basically have the meeting open now. We're at the public forum section and I don't know what I did with, with that. If, if you don't mind reading that for me, I'd appreciate it if you have it.
I'm looking for it as well, Mr. Gooch.
Basically what it states, if anybody would like to speak now, you didn't have to notify because it's an emergency meeting. There was no notification requirements. If you'd like to speak, it's time to do so now.
I'm unmuting everyone at this time, Mr. Gooch. For anyone that would like to make a public comment, also ask though that if there's more than one person that wants to make a public comment, we respect each other's views and that we don't try to speak over each other. We would do this one at a time. So at this time, all participants should have been unmuted. They, everyone's unmuted from my controls. If you are in the meeting and you've seen your bottom left-hand corner next to the main, that the mic is muted. That's from your local device. So from the control panel, I've unmuted everyone, Mr. Gooch. Is there anyone who has a public comment?
Mr. Martinelli, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pointer.
Is it okay to just start, or do you have a specific order that you want to go in?
I don't think we have any specific order. Just remember, Mr. Pointer, we're under the, the limit of five minutes like we normally would be. I don't, Mr. Gooch, are you keeping that time, or do I need to?
I can keep it.
Okay.
I won't.
I think the board is yours, Mr. Pointer.
I want to thank everybody at the district for all the hard work and for the, the work that you put in getting meals and, and teachers' information and thank the teachers for all the work they've done. The work for the students. I'm going to just urge the, that the board vote to postpone the election until November. It's not an ideal situation, but, but a ton of people have been contacting me about it and, and they are really concerned about, about getting sick. Every level of government has suggested that, that gatherings like this be postponed. It's common sense because the, the virus is going to lead to a much lower turnout and, and that's a problem for the, for the election. There's going to be an additional cost to the district since the city has already postponed their election. And, you know, I've, I've had some questions and spoke to Mr. Martinelli and then spoke to the county as well and, and, you know, the, the county is concerned about, about the health and safety of the, of the workers. You know, the way it was communicated to me is i- if, if the board goes through and has the election, they'll have the election because they're professionals and that's the way that they will operate. But they, they have some concerns that have been communicated to them by the employees. So I, I think it's just really a, a good idea to postpone the election until November. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alec. Does anybody else wish to speak in open forum, in public forum?
I would like to ask a question.
Okay, who's speaking?
Kristi Journey.
Okay.
If it's allowed to be answered back, I would appreciate it. There was some information put out on Facebook that the board had already voted on this item. Has, is that true or untrue? Or is this the first time y'all will be voting on this?
That is not true. When we move to, what I'll do after this, because it seems like this is what is a hot issue, we'll move that item up and we'll kind of tell you what the thought process was and the process we've gone through over the last, it really hasn't been that long, twelve, thirteen days, two weeks, seems like a long time, but with information changing every ten minutes, thirty minutes, couple hours, a lot of things have changed since a decision was made. So I, I think I can address a lot of that once we get to that item on the agenda. But no, no vote has been made. This is the first time it is on our agenda to consider.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would wish to speak? Okay, what, did I hear somebody speak? Okay, Mr. Martinelli, I believe that's it. We can move to our regular agenda. And since that, that we had two questions on the election, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to move item number two and do it first. That way it's fresh on everybody's mind.
Mr. Gooch, real quick, if I can, if you'll allow me to manage the participants, I'm going to mute
Yes, sir.
participants again, and then I ask the board members to unmute their own screens. Will that work with everyone?
Perfect.
Okay, thank you. So board members, if you will, at this time, it looks like, I see Ms. Mallett has, Mr. Bradisich has, Mr. Limley, Mr. Evans, Ms. Harvey, do you still need to unmute yours as well, please?
Oh, gotcha. Now I'm on?
And Mr. Gooch.
That showed me.
Yes, ma'am, you're on. And Mr. Gooch, I believe you're unmuted as well.
You can, you can hear me? You can hear me now?
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay, I think you muted me. You tired of hearing me already?
No, sir.
Is, is it okay with the rest of the board to move item two, or actually that would be item four up and, and address that first, since we had a couple of issues or a couple of concerns with that?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. And Alec, thank you for your input and Kristi, thank you for your questions. It's not taken lightly by this board, I assure you that. And there has been conversations. It's trying to give you a timeline and some of these are off memory, so if I'm off a day or so on the dates, don't, don't hold me to it, but on, I think it was around three eighteen, the government, the governor issued his proclamation to postpone elections, which mean, means the board had to gather and act upon that. It wasn't an automatic postponement. On three nineteen, the governor, so maybe three sixteen he actually did, at three nineteen or somewhere in that area is when he issued the ten or less gatherings, kind of the first phase of what was going on. On three twenty, the county issued a, an emergency action plan to continue to hold the election, provided that to us, said it's, you know, your decision. At that time, I guess the one or two board members, the officers I talked to were optimistic that things would turn around and be a little bit better by the time we ever got to April twentieth. I think the entire community, state, nation probably held that same sentiment. On three twenty-four, and this is not at all throwing the, the Election Commission under the bus, we were contacted by the Election Commission and they needed an answer that day. And remember, in order to cancel this, it requires court action. So we have, we've been notified they need an answer on three twenty-four. I believe that was a Tuesday. We don't have notice. We don't have a board called. I'm not sure we were set up at the time to maybe do this with Zoom even. I think that was the, maybe the second week, the beginning of the second week after spring break. So at that point, well, okay, if we have a deadline today, we can't do anything but continue on, continue on. Three thirty-one, Tuesday morning, or actually Tuesday evening, Mr. Martinelli received a call from the judge, left a voicemail for him wanting to return his call Wednesday morning, returned that call. It's, and we are informed it's still not too late to encourage charges to cancel that meeting. That's why it's on the agenda today. Now, I will say this, the initial thought back in mid-March, when the proclamation came out was, we're a small community. We don't need seven months of, we don't need seven months of politics or people campaigning. We really don't. We're too small for that. And so the thought was, let's put it in place. Again, the sentiment was, I think everybody thought this thing would turn around. It'd be a couple of weeks, we'd be freed back up, which would have been well in advance of the early voting period of April twentieth. That being said, things changed quickly and here we are today. And today is when the board will take action to either continue on or to postpone it. With that said, any board members wish to speak on?
I did, I did see that you mentioned that several of you had, or some of you had discussed it and had ideas about it, pressing, whatever. Anyway, I just, I just wanted to say that I was not talked to about anything about these plans.
No, you weren't.
I think, I think it was something that we were all hoping was not going to take this long as far as what's going on. But I'm glad that everybody's together now to make a decision to, to hopefully postpone it.
Any further comments? Okay, entertain a motion to, or Scott, are you talking?
I am, Mr. Gooch. I guess we would just entertain a vote to postpone the May second board election to November.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Danny. Danny makes a motion and a second was?
Ms. Carolyn.
Ms. Carolyn.
Mallett made the second.
Okay.
Was that by hand? I didn't hear a voice.
Yes, ma'am, it was by, well, Mrs. Mallett was by voice.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say no. Those abstaining say aye. Okay, so I think that would be seven oh, correct?
That's my understanding, Mr. Gooch.
Good. I can turn it over to you, Mr. Martinelli. We will move to, back to item number three. And, and thank you, everybody. I don't want everybody in the public to think that this was just haphazardly moving forward. There were thoughts in conversation between the officers of the board. And, and, and encourage everybody to keep this campaign because we do have such a long campaign season now, going to November, another seven months, that let's keep this thing above board. We're too small of a community to let this thing go south and, and start getting Facebook courage and getting on there and posting things without coming and talking to the board members or to the superintendent. I encourage everybody to do that. And Mr. Martinelli, with that, I'll turn over item number three to you, consideration and action on the resolution regarding GPA and class rank policy, IEC, EIC.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Board members, what you had in your packets you received earlier today, and it's those that are here at the school have it as well. It's a resolution that was put together by our council, Mr. Colby Nichols. We worked stringently on this yesterday along with principals and counselor, Ms. Harris. Essentially what the resolution does is during this situation, during this emergency or crisis we're dealing with, we officially wrap up the fifth, six weeks tomorrow. And then we start the six, six weeks on Monday. And what does that look like for the grade of our kids? Well, we have policies in place, things that are stated in our student handbook, things that are stated in our faculty handbook, policy, board policy as well. This resolution will allow us to work with those things, make adjustments according to the situation we're in, according to the emergency we're dealing with. One of the things specifically, there's, there's a couple of specific items in there and there's some general statements in this resolution. I'll start with the specifics. And Mr. Fowler, I believe Mr. Fowler is on the meeting, I believe Ms. Sajewski is, and I believe Harris is. They've helped work through these things. So guys, if I miss something, please feel free to unmute and, and add in as, as I talk about this resolution. The first specific one is has to do with senior GPAs and so calculating GPA and determining class rank. Our policy that we have in place says that those grades could go through the end of the fifth, six weeks. We are, we're hesitant about that because the fifth, six weeks is when all this emergency occurred. And even though we've been sending instructional supports home, we've been sending work home to kids, the grading for the fifth, six weeks is, is, is not consistent, may not be accurate. So the first specific part of the resolution would ask that we calculate senior GPA, which would determine class rank. We go back to the end of the third, six weeks, which is also the same as the end of the first semester. And that's the cutoff we would use to generate those final GPAs for the class of twenty twenty and their class rank. This is not uncommon. There are some districts of the state of Texas that already do this. I talked to the superintendents, the lawyers, counselors, there, like I said, there's some districts already do this. We're in the unique situation that we stretch ours out farther into the second semester. So that's, that's one of the specific resolutions in this is determining how we calculate their final GPA. Now, talking about the fifth, six weeks grades, that also affects the class of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. They are all high school kids who are going through the craziest semester anyone's ever seen in public education. So the resolution speaks to the fact that their GPAs and class rank will be determined the same way. So what we would do when we calculate their final GPA, instead of them having eight semesters, it would be seven. This current semester would not be calculating their final GPA when they graduate. So you can see the, the effects of, of what's going on in the last month is already affecting students three years down the road. But that's another specific piece of this resolution. I want to be real clear that, that some of these are specific. That led to a lot of detailed, long conversation about our eighth grade kids. Because we have some eighth graders that are taking high school credit courses at this time. And so the second semester of Algebra One for those kids, or the second semester of Spanish One, and I, I think there's, there's one other year-long high school course that eighth graders can take. There's three of them. So we don't want those kids' GPAs to suffer either. But the, the large portion of the class of twenty twenty-four is not affected by this because they're taking regular junior high courses that do not play into high school GPA. So the specific piece of that is worded, and, and please understand, we're not just, it's not just the administrative team that's working on this. We've talked to teachers, we've talked to those teachers that have these eighth grade kids in their high school classes. And we think what one of the very bare solutions is for these eighth grade kids is in calculating their GPA, we would use their fourth, six weeks grades. Ms. Harris, feel free to chime in. I'm, I may have to read it to you guys.
We would use their fourth, six weeks grades with the portion that we have from the fifth, six weeks because according to the teachers I've spoke with that are, their grade, their classes are affected by this. They said that they have two, at least two major test grades, so they feel pretty confident with the fifth grade, fifth, six weeks grades. So averaging those, the fourth and fifth together with their first semester.
That would be the semester grade for the second semester of these kids, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so then those kids, their number of semesters averaged in when they get to be seniors would, it would be the same. Those, those were the specific items in this resolution. The, the other broad terms are simply asking the board's approval for me as superintendent to have the authority to change some of these other items as we move forward and try to figure out what this looks like. What our administrative team has done, what Mr. Fowler has done, Ms. Sajewski has worked with groups of teachers from their campuses. They have generated a plan for what the sixth, six weeks would look like. As we're pushing this work home, we're going to hold kids a little, a little accountable so that we can wrap up a school year and have some grades in the grade book for them. And so Ms. Sajewski did that with her teachers. They've come up with a system that's kind of a completion type thing. And, and we, again, with this resolution passed, we'll be, we would be pushing this information out to teachers and then we'll be pushing it out to parents so they know what the expectations are. And Mr. Fowler has done the same with, with his teachers. They've kind of asked to adjust the minimum number of grades. And, and so that's one was kind of a, a adopted a plan, a different plan for each campus because they're very different situations. So that's what those general statements would do in the resolution is, is give me the, the authority as a superintendent to make these adjustments like the minimum number of grades and such. What we've talked about doing for the fifth, six weeks is, and, and again, that ends, officially ends tomorrow. So we've talked about what do we do for the kids that have been completing work and turning it in? And how do we make sure we're not hurting those kids that haven't been able to do that work? Do they not have internet access at home? Do they not have a ride here to get here to get, to pick up a packet? And again, our administrative team and teachers have been monitoring that closely. If we see those kids, we're trying to reach out to them and as a district, what can we do to help you? Do you need a hotspot? Do you need a Chromebook, a device? Do you want us to deliver your packet? Do you want us to mail you your packet? So we're trying to do everything we can to get that work to kids. But what we would do with the last two weeks of work is ask teachers to take that work into consideration as far as giving those kids that have done it and turned it in, give them some kind of credit. But we're not going to, we're not going to be, the students' average is not going to suffer because they haven't done this. So the work for the last two weeks would be almost like extra credit or a bonus. We want to give those kids credit for what they've done for the last two weeks and help their average. Essentially what we've said as an administrative team is no one's average, when we enter that in for the fifth, six weeks, no one's average should be lower than what it was whenever we got out for spring break. And if you remember, that was progress report time. So we've made sure we've gone back and we've printed out that report. We know what kids' grades were at progress report time and what would be entered for the fifth, six, six weeks. No grade would be lower than that. Again, I'm, I'm talking about things that would fall under those general statements in the resolution. So the board, do you have any questions about what I've spoken about so far?
Yes, I do. When you're talking about, you're only talking about eighth grade students at this point, right? Or in elementary and eighth grade? Is there extra work and their grades and all of that?
No, we'd be talking about everyone, Mrs. Mallett. Our secondary kids, the majority of our secondary kids Our secondary kids, the majority of our secondary kids and then our secondary teachers have had a Google Classroom going on since the beginning of school. So we've seen the most work generated by our secondary kids because these online courses were already in place. They kind of haven't missed, missed a beat. So, no, when I was talking about, specifically when I was talking about the GPA piece, I was talking specifically about high school students because elementary and junior high kids do not have a GPA.
Right. But I I guess what I'm at, what I'm not, what I'm asking is the seniors, that's going to be done. Whatever their GPA was at midterm, it's over.
Yes, ma'am.
No extra work, nothing's going to make any difference as far as that goes.
Well, let's, let's not forget, just because their GPA is is calculated and their class rank is determined, they still have to earn credit for these courses they're taking at this time. So yes, their fourth, six weeks average, our plan for the fifth, six weeks, and our plan for the sixth, six weeks would still go into play for them earning credits that they have to earn graduating. That's why, that's one of the reasons this was an emergency meeting because we need to kind of finalize this. And the fifth, six weeks ends tomorrow and the last six weeks in or begins Monday, we need to push this information out to families so they know what we're expecting. And it can't look like it's looked when we were in school because our circumstances are completely different.
Okay, so it states that for the seniors for nineteen twenty, this will be their final GPA for current seniors. So how will the GPA cha, I mean, it shouldn't change if this is the final at midterm?
Their GPA will not change, but they still have to have some grades for the fifth and sixth, six weeks to earn credit for that.
So their ranking will be the same?
Yes, ma'am.
But then they have to earn credit or whatever to get credit for the last six weeks? Okay. Okay. I, I'm not sure what you mean by insert any other temporary adjustments to policy because that is the E, that is, the EIC is only for ranking, right? That policy is ranking alone. And so that's already been determined that the ranking is going to be what it was at midterm.
I guess I don't understand your question, Mrs. Mallett.
That. In other words, I guess what I'm saying is that what adjustments or what would you want to make to policy that the district wishes to make? In other words, you're asking us to give you the authority to make any changes in policy?
Yes.
When, when the, it's all, that policy only deals with ranking.
Okay, if you read the second bullet in your packet, it says, be it further resolved that the district's board of trustees authorizes the superintendent to make any necessary changes to policy, administrative regulations, or other procedures as necessary to complement the intent of this resolution. And then the second statement says, be it further resolved that the district's board of trustees authorize the superintendent of schools and district administration to take any and all action necessary to carry out the wishes of the board as expressed in this resolution and make any additional decisions regarding the district's grading policy during the stated disaster and while remote learning continues for students. So I'd like to go, I'd like to further stress, I I've only asked for a resolution so that I could pay our employees and I'm asking for a resolution so that we can figure out grading for our kids because it's not going to look the same during this time. If you check other districts, there's some superintendents that have been given a resolution to make every decision, even purchasing decisions over fifty thousand dollars. So I don't think I'm asking for much here. I'm just trying to make sure our district can continue forward and that we're taking care of our kids.
Well, this, this, this announcement to policy is still just ranking, right?
No, ma'am. Well, under I E C.
EIC local is just ranking.
That's why I'm trying to point out to you, the general statements after I E C would allow us to for example, like I mentioned earlier, the minimum number of grades that's listed in our handbooks. An example, what the high schools come up with, I believe our policy in the handbook states that they have eight major or eight daily grades and three major grades per six weeks. So what we would be doing is adjusting that and and what the teachers are asking for is six daily grades and two major grades with guidance on what those major grades could be. They don't have to be tests. They could be a PowerPoint project that's turned in online. They could be a Zoom presentation. There's a list of things that we've generated and the teachers have helped generate what those major grades would look like. So yes, that essentially, that's what that general statement would be covering is us making adjustment in what our handbook says the minimum number of grades would be for the secondary kids. So you're just going to adjust the number of grades at this point? That would be?
Daily grades.
Yes, sir. If there's no other questions, I'd ask the board pass the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Tammy and was that, who was the second by?
Luke.
Luke, okay. Motion is second, any further discussion? Okay, no further discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay? Okay, assume anybody?
Mr. Mallett, I apologize. Mr. Gooch, would you maybe have them vote by raising their hand?
Okay. Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. My hand is raised. Those opposed, raise your hand. Those abstaining, raise your hand. Mr. Martindale, I have to depend on you for the count. I can't see.
It was seven oh, Mr. Gooch.
Okay, seven oh. Okay, thank you for that. That would be all we have tonight. We need one more motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Tammy, Tammy moves to adjourn. It sounded like red second, so those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you, Mr. Gooch. Thank you, everybody.